I'm going to call the meeting to order. Rebecca, will you please call the roll?
Ham.
Here.
Toohill.
Here.
Flornoy.
Here.
Gandy.
Yes.
Caness.
Yes.
Row.
Here.
Right. Counselors, any changes to the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Approval of the minutes of the November 25th, 2024 council meeting. Approval of the December 6th, 2024 payroll in the amount of $196,519.43. Acceptance of Carnegie Museum board minutes. Acceptance of volunteer city committee minutes. Acceptance of the library board minutes. Resolution of employment in the fire department. Approval of liquor license for veterans of foreign wars. Approval of ACH payment to the Department of Revenue in the min- excuse me, in the amount of $9,642.35. Approval of total claims in the amount of $940,434.03. We had three claims larger than $75,000. One to EBS for our health insurance of $81,692.10. Post Two Partners LLC, this for the rebate, $77,879.19. And Woodruff Construction for step three, $405,641.17. Is there a motion to approve?
It's removed.
Moved by Gandy.
Second.
Second by Flornoy. Any questions?
I have a question about the Carnegie museum minutes. In the minutes, they were going to buy a gift card for $100 for employee or volunteer. And I'm not sure if using taxpayer dollars or if the foundation is going to cover that expense. I'm not certain that that would be a lawful expense if it's a gift card for a volunteer.
I kind of had the same question. Any comment on that, John? As legal counsel?
Is it the foundation buying it or the board?
It's not clear. But anyway, we had this come up.
I don't know which it is, Doug, so I don't know if I got a good answer.
Well, if it's the foundation, of course, it'd be legal, but.
Jason.
I believe it was the foundation.
But it wasn't.
Oh, foundation?
Yeah.
Okay. So if it was foundation, that's a private foundation, so it could be done.
Yeah.
Is that fair statement?
They're not subject to the Iowa constitution on gifts for private individuals, so you're right.
So we might make sure that they clarify that.
Can I ask you to revise the minutes to reflect that information?
Sure. Sure. Okay. Okay, any other questions?
I did go through the check run stream and everything seemed in order.
Great. Thank you. If there's no other questions, please call the roll.
Gandy.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Caness.
Yes.
Toohill.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
Row.
Yes.
Thank you. Public forum and appearances, we have several things here. So again, if we would like to keep our comments to three minutes if possible. Alex McUnus, our library director, is up first for the library annual report.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me do my annual report this evening. It's nice to see all of you. Happy holidays. So this is the fiscal year 24 annual report. Much has been accomplished in the last year with services greatly expanded, several new regular popular program offerings, and nearly half of our policies now revisited in order to better support our community and library staff. Public libraries are resilience hubs. We are the first and last stop for folks in need. We are champions for the joy of reading and for intellectual freedom. I remain committed to the mission of the Fairfield Public Library as determined by the Fairfield Library Board of Trustees. With that spirit and together with the whole Fairfield community, let's reimagine our public library for today. Just to kind of revisit our vision and mission. Our vision is to foster curiosity, connection, and empowerment. Our mission is to provide access to programs, materials, and resources that celebrate diversity, stimulate the imagination, and encourage lifelong learning. To offer a safe, comfortable place for individuals to enjoy and the community to gather. To promote better understanding of our history, meaningful endeavors today, and a more sustainable, equitable, and collaborative future. Here is our library team. Just to kind of run through the role. Up top, from left to right, we have Evan McConaughey, front desk staff; Danny Hannes, graphic designer and technical services specialist; Karen Blakely, office coordinator; Lauren Schafter, front desk manager; Sarah Martindale, children's librarian; Caitlin Doherty, front desk staff; myself in the front on the left; Sean Charleston, front desk staff; Joy Craig, adult services librarian; and Afton Pedrick, assistant youth services librarian. In fiscal year 24, we had 80,422 annual visitors. In terms of in-person, library-sponsored events, we had 793. Our attendance for those programs was 11,580. Here you can see at one of our recent adult craft and connect programs. There's a, it's nice we've been having some kids show up, and it's nice to see the children and the, you know, older folks getting to spend time together. In terms of collection development, in fiscal year 24, we added 3,890 items, deleted 5,784 based on our collection development policy. We remove items from the collection that have not circulated in a particular number of years or that, items that have very, very poor condition. Our total physical collection at the end of last fiscal year was 79,316 items. We have the largest physical collection of any comparable library in the state. Our total digital collection, including the Bridges Consortium's Libby offerings, is 152,004 unique items.
Alex?
Yes.
When you say comparable library?
I mean comparable in terms of the community they serve is a similar size. So similar-sized population and also similar funding, similar staffing. For circulation, for annual physical items, we had 106,847 items checked out. For annual digital downloads through Libby, we had 20,091 items downloaded. And you can see here, this breakdown shows our most popular collection areas. Jim Rubus says it hasn't changed that much in, you know, 20 years. But we have still DVDs circulating very strongly. That's on the left side. At the bottom, you can see adult fiction. To the right of that, nonfiction, and that top green section is picture books. So circulations are just increasing more and more every year. It's been a really good year for us in terms of checkouts. And we have incredible digital resources at Fairfield Public Library. We are, we rival what Atumwa and Burlington offer to their community. We offer Hoopla for digital downloads of eBooks, e-audio books, movies, and music. We also offer Consumer Reports online, and we have The New York Times online, Wall Street Journal online. It's pretty impressive. Significant accomplishments for fiscal year 24. In quarter one, digital newspaper archives of Jefferson County goes live. Sci-fi book club collaboration with Washington Public Library begins. Video games available for checkout. MyLibro smartphone library app debuts. Hoopla digital streaming app available. New library cards, new library card designs introduced with 870 signups in the month of September, up from just 237 in September the year before. So we went from 237 in one month to over 800. Pretty impressive. I'm very happy and, you know, it wouldn't, it wasn't, it wouldn't be possible without our incredible front desk staff. They're the ones, you know, signing people up, educating everybody about all of our amazing offerings. Into quarter two, we had the Fix-It Bike Repair Station installed on Second Street. The streets department helped us install that. For the first time, three professional library staff members attended the Iowa Library Association's annual conference. Toddler Connect and Play Program begins. Wall repairs, repainting, and corner guards installed. Quarter three, LED lighting upgrade complete. Thank you so much for your financial support of Fairfield Public Library so we can make sure that we have adequate lighting in the building. And it was a great opportunity to upgrade and save the city some serious funds with those energy-efficient lights. Next up, we had the facilities condition assessment completed by Samuel's Group of Des Moines. This is going to allow us to more, to better strategize our, the maintenance and the maintenance of our building and also think about actually improving upon the building as we're maintaining. Youth Services expands relationship with ISU Extension Office with School Ready Readers Program. Library expands local art collection with library awards at Fairfield Art Association Annual Member Show and completion of our strategic plan for 2024 through 2027. And last, quarter four, the long-awaited controls upgrade by Johnson Controls. So for many, many years, library directors have struggled with the controls of the library. And the system we had was running with a central computer from 1985. And in order to connect to it, the technicians had to connect a laptop from 1984 to run updates and to check and see what might be wrong. But now we have a 2024 very, very nice control system with thermostatts installed throughout the building. And we have a very comfortable meeting room where we do our kids programming, everything, you know. And for a long time, it was either too cold or too hot or too humid or too dry. It feels just right now. So thank you so much again. That was a very expensive update that the city provided, and I'm really, really grateful for that financial support. Next up, print app introduced for more convenient printing. 500 Attend Summer Reading Challenge kickoff. Partnership with Carnegie Museum begins with If Barnes Could Talk, Iowa Humanities Speaker. And finally, Canopy video streaming service reintroduced. For the summer reading challenge in 2024, we had 459 kids sign up. This year, we were not eligible for our usual grants from Allian Energy and Dollar General, but we were able to raise over $4,000 from our very generous local Fairfield and Jefferson County area businesses.
Why weren't we, why weren't you eligible for those usual grants?
Because we had just tapped out, you can only, with those two particular grants, you can only request funds for so many years in a row, and then they say you have to take a break. But, but the incredible thing was that we actually raised about as much from our local, with our local businesses' support as we had raised in past years with the grants. So that is incredible. And that's Sarah Martindale, our children's librarian. When she, when she lived in Atumwa, when, and she formerly was a volunteer storytime person at their library there. They said, please, Sarah, don't go to Fairfield. Stay here. We lucked out. Total number of programs in just the months of June and July, 87. 87 programs for kids. And total attendees at these programs, 4,381. It's a very important resource for families during those summer months. Matinee Book Club, our longest-running book club, celebrated five years. And our fiscal end-of-year balances for June 30. Since 1968, Fairfield Public Library has had an account at Iowa State Bank. We have historically used this account to pay for library materials, you know, buy equipment, that sort of thing. Library materials, basically. We also deposit funds from the book sale in that account. And when we have capital projects and we're raising money, we will put funds in that account. So you can see at the end of last fiscal year, we had a total of $36,959.55 remaining. And then our endowment shows the CDs that the library has. These have historically been used also to pay for library materials. The interest is received by the library in the form of quarterly checks. And then on the far right, you can see our combined assets at the end of last year was $617,694.35. The library Board of Trustees is in the process of finalizing, finalizing a transition where these funds would move into the city's general fund, and these funds that are used to pay for library materials and such would be in a protected, protected funding line. And so that is kind of an ongoing process we're in right now. And Rebecca Loper, city clerk, is, you know, been very supportive as we've begun this process. Finally, I want to talk to you about this, our strategic plan and some highlights. So check out our library website if you want to see the full plan. But this is something I thought that you'd be encouraged by. First goal, increase visibility of the library. Our action steps are creating print brochures, a new library map, and a quarterly print newsletter. Additionally, we want to purchase a book bike for use at outreach events and to visit seniors and possibly the schools. Second goal, hire MSR Design, an internationally recognized library design architecture firm based in Minneapolis, to help us with a phased library renewal plan. We, within that goal, need to host a key stakeholder meeting with MSR, which we have now, we've now held that meeting, and it was very, very successful. We, we need to work with Samuel's Group to develop our capital plan to figure out how we're going to pay for this. And it's going to be primarily through grants and, you know, community fundraising that we will do this. And then our goal is to have the library renewal completed, all, all pieces of this by 2035. Next goal, increase the number of sponsored, within the expanding program, programming for middle-aged adults and seniors. We want to increase the number of sponsored book clubs, offer monthly educational programs for technology, and develop a fiber arts program potentially in collaboration with Fairfield Arts Association, local artists, and local businesses. Next goal, build a vibrant community of library volunteers. Within this goal, we plan to develop a volunteer application process with an application and an interview and assign a secondary role of volunteer coordinator to a current full-time staff member and develop the capacities of that person. Two more goals to go. Investigate the need for a library maker space or maker experience. A maker experience is kind of like a smaller version of a maker space. Just kind of lets people get a taste of what a maker space is like. We do, in our community, have, you know, two or possibly three maker spaces already, but they are not necessarily as accessible as a maker space could be. They have membership fees associated with them, or they're not necessarily open all the time.
What is a maker space?
A maker space is, it's sort of like an open classroom where people can, can explore, like, new kinds of technologies such as 3D printers, laser engravers. Sometimes they have, you know, things like pottery wheels and sewing machines. But it can be, you know, whatever you want it to be, which is, which is pretty cool. Anything else? Cool. And then, and we want to hold community meetings to discuss the need for, for example, 3D printing classes or support or, you know, the other things I mentioned. So if we do do a maker space, it's going to be based on what the community really wants. And then finally, our last goal, to improve access to the library's digital tools and resources. And the action steps are investigate a potential rebuild of the library's website and investigate competitively-priced modern libraries, a competitively-priced modern library software product. The, in terms of the library's expenditures, what we pay to the company that provides us with our library software to manage our collection, it's by far the highest expenditure in our, our other contractual services. And we work with the Library Corporation, which is one of the oldest software, you know, producers out there. Like, they've been around since, like, I think the late 70s, and they're not the best anymore. And so I'm going to do research and I'm going to, I'm going to get the best for us. And it's going to be the best and it's going to be the most reasonably priced. So I'm very excited about all those things. And I'm really, really, I'm really, really impressed with what our staff has accomplished in the last year with the support of our library Board of Trustees, our amazing city council, and the whole community. Thank you so much for your support of Fairfield Public Library.
Thanks, Alex. We appreciate all you've done as well. Chris Sorflaton, this is the EPA SWIFR grant application update.
Hello, hello. Did everyone get the email of the grant? And here I have some recycled glass mulch we made. So I borrowed a tumbler from a friend. I don't know, do you want to pass it around? So that's a four-day tumble with no media, so there's, there's different ways you could do it. There's a lot to it. You can put media in it to make it shinier and, or you can grind it smaller. That, I just broke it up with a hammer and put it in it. Anyway, yeah, I added a lot of things to this grant. And so I wanted to talk to you guys first about proceeding. See what kind of edits we want to have before we fill out the forms. And.
Did you say you emailed a copy of the grant application to us?
Yeah. The narrative, 10-page narrative, 10-page narrative, and just to go over it. So we were originally talking about, like, an electric gate with security cameras and that didn't. So it was like, all right, well, what can we add to sweeten this deal up? And so I read the 50-page NOFO Notice of Financial Opportunity, and the, the general feeling of the grant was for recycling. Like, they really wanted to take products out of the recycling stream and turn them into products. So, and I was like, all right, well, the mulch pile does kind of fit into that because we're going to create mulch and biochar and soil and compost and stuff like that. But it was really focused on, like, keeping waste out of the landfill. So I called Waste Management, the front desk, hey, Waste Management guy. And, and I talked to them for just a minute, a couple minutes. And we sent, the city of Fairfield sends four semi-loads a month to Des Moines. Each one is 25 tons. So, and then I called International Paper in Des Moines, where it goes to. And I was like, hey, is everything getting recycled or is something going to the landfill? And they were like, okay, well, the glass goes to the landfill. And I was like, all right, well, glass, like, that's got to be a quarter of the recycling. So that's, that's about, that's over 200 tons a year of glass going to the Des Moines landfill. So I was like, all right, well, that's actually about as much mulch as we produce, too. 200 tons a year. Joe Hurd told me that.
So Chris, what do you do with what you've just presented there? If that's, if that's part of this?
This is the narrative, yeah.
Right. But what, what do you do with that, those glass that's been tumbled? That you're just passing around?
That is called glass mulch. So you can buy it at Home Depot in Iowa City. And the city of Austin, Texas produces it for free for the residents. So it's a way of keeping the glass out of the landfill. You have, like.
But you're putting it around your plants, around your home?
Yeah.
That's what they're using it for?
People use it for landscaping, or we had the idea, put it on the alley, you know, but for that, it would, it'd have to be, like, smaller and less able to break into smaller pieces, kind of thing. Or we even had the idea, like, the bike trail. Isn't that be fun to have a sparkling glassy bike? And then bag it up and sell it. Because that was the other thing that, in the NOFO, it talked about, like, they actually want products from the recycling stream going for sale. So that was the idea, was like, okay, well, we'll create a bagging, build a shed, bagging facility, tumbler, crusher, bag it up and sell it to Menards. You know, sell it to retailers or, and then I was like, well, you know, then we could sell it there at the, at the mulch pile, too. So that was when I had the idea of the coffee shop. And then, and then the spot I picked out at the end of West Lowe is, what a great spot. You know, it's perfect. It's 22 acres, and about half of it is usable, flat ground. And the other half is a lowland drainage ditch creek that I thought would be, of course, I'm the beaver guy. So I thought people could hang out and drink coffee and watch beavers clean up the water supply. So, so that's part, that's actually in the NOFO for the Swiffer grant is other streams of waste, too. And sustainability, like, that was a big aspect of the grant, was like, we want this money to go to infrastructure for sustainability. And beavers being perhaps one of the most sustainable things on the planet. They clean up the water, create habitat for wildlife. And what a great area that the city could produce for people.
So are you suggesting that the city of Fairfield buys this lot?
With the grant money.
With the grant money?
Yeah.
Okay.
And also with eminent domain, I.
Are they willing to sell this or do you know?
I don't know. I haven't talked to them, but I'm a big fan of eminent domain.
So, counsel, I don't know how you feel about it, but I'm thinking the environmental committee needs to go over this with you.
Yeah.
And.
It's due on Thursday.
Yeah.
At midnight.
But I think, I'm just giving my own opinion here.
Yeah.
The coffee shop doesn't fit in here. I think it's just, it's, you know, you need to focus on the recycling part of it.
Okay.
Any thoughts, counsel?
I agree. I vote NOFO.
I have the same thought. Also, I'm a little concerned about what the city would do with potentially hundreds of tons of glass if we can't find someone to offload it onto. I mean, how much glass, tumble glass, would the residents of Fairfield really like in your average year?
Yeah. Mix it with cement and make roads out of it.
Right. Well.
I looked into that, and actually, glass is a very chemical reactive. So you can't make cement, you can't put it in cement unless you add other chemicals to neutralize the glass. And there's like a dozen different types of glass. So for each type of glass, you need a different chemical to prevent the react. So I did have the idea, well, okay, we could probably pile it up outside the DOT, and they could put it under the roads.
Maybe.
And there could be like a pile of the ready-mixed concrete plant, you know, like, people who wanted to use it like sand under roads.
I think I'd be willing, as a member of the Environmental Franchise Committee, to meet in the next couple days. I don't know.
I'll have to look.
You'll have to look.
I'll have to squeeze, yeah.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, this is due on.
Motion to the secretary, so.
Yeah, this is due on Thursday.
Yeah.
And you have to give a 24-hour notice. That meets, meeting on Wednesday.
Right.
Yeah.
And actually, I think it still has to be formatted into the grants.gov page. You can't just, like, upload this document.
Right.
There's lots of different.
Right.
Faces to it.
There's lots of components, and Elizabeth would need to be a part of it, too.
Yeah. Well, the other option is maybe we plan on simply, this grant's going to also be available next year, right?
It's up to Trump. I don't know.
Right. So we can have that conversation.
Yeah.
To streamline it some more.
Maybe there is a way to really simplify this and get to the heart of the matter?
Yeah. I still think it's, you know, a good idea if there's money available to help improve the city, go after it, but.
I thought the city would appreciate the part I put in there about getting our own garbage truck. So that's $800,000 garbage truck owned by the city, I thought.
If you can get the federal government to pay for it, I'm all in for it.
So I'm sorry. Did you make a motion?
I guess I'm making the motion to revisit this when, next year, on a timeline for next year's grant application. So we have a year.
Okay.
So I guess table it for now, and then when Elizabeth is here, we can.
So you make two motions. Do you want to make a motion table it first?
I guess I'll just make a motion to table it, yeah, it seems like, until next year.
Okay. Is there a second? Okay, is there a second?
I will second that.
Second by Hamm. Any other discussion? Now, please call the roll.
Rowe?
Yes.
Hamm?
Yes.
Florinoy?
Yes.
Canass?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
And I would like to say, too, not that we don't appreciate everything you've done, I mean, this is fantastic, but if anything has changed in that meeting, then it would have to come back to Council and be approved by a vote and all that, which we will meet before Thursday to do that, so...
Well, I appreciate...
But we absolutely appreciate everything you've done, and all the work you put into this, it's fantastic, so...
Thank you.
It's a great place to start, and I think it just needs more work, and, yeah.
Yeah.
Let's refine it and really have it be a better, yeah.
Yeah. Well, I appreciate the time and look forward to volunteering more in the future.
Great.
Thank you, Chris.
Austin Wilkinson, are you here?
Yeah.
Okay. He wants to talk a little bit about the mulch pile site management.
Does Council still have a copy that I dropped off from my proposal?
Mm-hmm.
If you do not, I brought more copies with me, so you can see it. If you need one, you need one.
Thanks.
I don't remember what makes...
Thank you.
So what I have put together, I own Scar Grinding LLC, which I am just outside of town, so I am a local business. What I am proposing as a possible solution to one of the community's biggest events right now, I guess, depending to some people, but right now, the biggest challenge is getting everybody together and everybody seeing eye to eye on how to manage the mulch pile. This proposal, in short, basically, the city will hand over the control of the site. They will still maintain the ground, they will maintain the lease with FIDA. I will just manage it, my company will just manage the site. So that goes as far as controlling when mulch comes in, mulch goes out. What I would like to see happen, my end goal to see happen, is it to be functional like it used to be, as far as being open, you know, as, you know, first come, first served, when you're able to, because that is the, the biggest problem is the logistics, as we're finding out. So what I would like to do is solve that problem. The hardest part is getting all of our ducks in a row across the board. The biggest problem we're going to face is paying for that, because it's not free. I would like to alleviate the city maintenance budget of the mulch pile, so if we find that funding somewhere else. In the proposal, I'm proposing we add a 60-cent fee to each water bill, which is 4,750 water bills approximately for Fairfield. We send that out, that totals to $7.20 a year. So $7.20 a year for however much mulch you would like to take out, however much brush you would like to bring in, okay? So it's just a, just like it used to be, you bring it in, you can take it out. $7.20 does not buy you two bags of mulch from Walmart at any time of the year. Those are about $3.99 a piece, which is two cubic feet of bag, so you're going to have four cubic feet. Now, you can come in and take as many yardages as you want, if this proposal were to be as functional as possible. Now, we're asking for that 60 cents, because there's a lot of cost involved in running the site, as the city has found out, or as maintenance knows. What I'm asking for is a 40% reduction in that cost, but it comes from the individuals who are going to be using it in the first place. So that total of the $7.20 per water bill per year is going to be about $34,200. So that's what it's going to cost my company baseline to manage the site entirely. My equipment, my personnel, my time, that's how it's all set up. So the city just has access to dump, so maintenance, there's no change in maintenance's ability to dump the, you know, four brush pickups a year. So with that being, so it doesn't affect anybody there, so...
Would you allow contractors in?
No. So solving that problem, I have in the proposal, I, one way or the other, as a small business, I am creating a commercial yard to mitigate that problem across the board. So contractors were dumping there because there is nowhere else to go, and they're getting fined by the government because it is illegal to pick up brush, transport it, and burn it off-site, which is how it's been done in the rural areas forever. So in order to solve that problem, no matter what happens, that problem is getting solved because I am opening a commercial yard here, local to town. I'm looking at a couple locations, so that's still to be determined. But as of right now, it would just be a few miles outside of town to mitigate that problem, no matter what the outcome of the pile is. So the commercial yard will open in the spring, contractors will go there, they will, it'll be a pay-to-dump, so just like the landfill, they pay per load to dump at my site, so...
How do you keep them from just dumping like they did with the city when they weren't allowed to?
So the problem was, they have no, I've talked to pretty much all of the contractors I can get ahold of in this area. None of them have a problem paying to dump, because it transfers that cost to their customer. You know, that $10, $15, whatever that may be, they have no problem passing that on. They are kind of stuck, you know, it's, this is helping them more so than helping anybody else, because I'm giving them an outlet for a problem that they're getting fined fairly heavily for. So in order to do this, so part of that $34,200 is going to go to security, so cameras. The other way I'm planning on mitigating it is, most contractors have large equipment. The gates, you can actually narrow them to the point where a pickup and car are about as easy as they are to get in, and you can actually stop the trailers from coming in, which is the major problem, because contractors are not going to haul in with pickups. If they do, that's not going to end well on their financial paperwork, so... So a physical way is narrowing the gates. A technological way, we will set up cameras, but that all costs money annually for the camera systems like that, so...
So how much startup money do you need?
As far as to start right now, so originally, the way we had, because the company that I bought out to start my business had been grinding for Fairfield before. So when it comes to the initial grinding cost, that comes upwards of, you know, $10,000 to $15,000, depending on how big the pile is. That's for the first initial grind, so the $34,000, if it were paid out monthly, you know, as it's collected, would work, you know. There's a lot of details there that still need to be worked out, as far as, you know, I could start immediately in the way it is, and we could go from there. So that initial grind would be that $10,000 to $15,000.
Is this...
Make a motion, move this to Environmental and Franchise.
I was just going to ask which committee, yeah.
Yeah.
That's the one I was looking at.
I mean, this is kind of what we've been looking for, so...
Exactly what we're looking for.
Let me talk to you about it.
Have you talked to Joe about the proposal?
Yes, I've been in contact with Joe, and Judy, and I've talked to Connie, and Doug as well, so...
Okay.
Been trying to do my diligence before I came before Council.
So it's been moved by Florinoy to move it to Environmental and Franchise? Is there a second? Second by Canass? Any further questions, discussion?
Was Joe, Joe okay opening, freeing up his Saturdays?
Do you want to say anything, Joe?
I'm fine, but I'd love for him to take it over. I'd love for him to take it over, but I still have to always have a site, in case something happens that I can do what we still do. I mean, I still have to pick brush up if there's a storm, I still have to, you know, we always have to have that in place, so whether he takes over and does this, and you pay him, or the citizens have to pay one way or another, you know, it's always going to go, so it doesn't matter to me.
So there's details to work out.
That's great with me.
Okay. Okay, so please call the roll.
Florinoy?
Yes.
Canass?
Yes.
Rowe?
Yes.
Hamm?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That will be moved to Environmental and Franchise, and look at it further. Oh, Silver Lakes HOA Waste Management proposed changes. Is there someone to speak?
The names are actually, we're reversing the order, if that's what you mean, and Sally would speak first.
Okay, I'm fine with that. Sally Omansky, is that how I say your name?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm Robert Omansky, and I'm just going to introduce my wife. I'm the HOA president for North Campus Village, represents 181 properties. Majority of the ages of the residents there are between 70 and 80 years old, and we're just very concerned about the impact of being forced to have 96-gallon receptacles imposed on our residents because of their physical limitations. Sally has been working on, working with the project for the last three years on trash receptacles because of some of the limitations of our community, the close proximities placed to store, and also the residents. So I'm going to turn the mic over to my wife.
Thank you. Good evening. For a considerable number of our homeowners in the North Campus Village, it would be an unwieldy task to drag and maneuver a 96-gallon container weighing close to 40 pounds alone without any trash inside, over uneven surfaces, including gravel, every week. In addition to being unmanageable, our concern is that it will present a serious safety hazard, especially when there's ice and snow accumulation. Another issue that North Campus Village would be faced with if 96-gallon trash receptacles were to be imposed, would be finding a place to store them. We're comprised of many closely situated triplexes with very little space to store our existing-sized receptacles. So over the past three years, the community has invested tens of thousands of dollars in the construction of garbage enclosures to house them, and I have some pictures of these, you can pass them around. Adding 96-gallon trash receptacles to be enclosed along with the present recycling bins would render a large number of these enclosures unusable. This would be a huge financial loss to have to rebuild all these again. Recycling containers have been limited to the three standard rectangular-shaped 32, 64, and 96-gallon that are featured on Waste Management website. Apparently, the limitation of these standard-sized and shaped containers enables one driver to efficiently accomplish the necessary pickup without having to get out of the truck. As their customers, we see no reason why the same three-size options for trash cannot be likewise made available. We know that at the City Council meeting on June 20th, 2017, a representative from Waste Management presented a proposal to City Council just like this to increase its efficiency. In that proposal, Waste Management would provide each household with trash containers similar to the recycling containers, and homeowners would have a choice of either 96- or 64-gallon containers. So if choices were given, then why can't they now? And I have copies of notes from that meeting in 2017, around, I don't have enough for everybody, but I have several. We know this is currently being done in other communities, like where our daughter lives in Bloomington, Minnesota, and by the way, they are a family of five, and use the 64-gallon Waste Management container for their trash, not the 96. Here are just a couple of comments sent to HOA email from our residents regarding the proposed change. Quote, "North Campus Village is a community of elderly people, many of them having health problems," end quote. And another one, quote, "Being required to use a 90-plus gallon receptacle is ridiculous and obviously discriminatory." And now I'd like to play a short video that I think was sent to Teresa.
There's already, there's currently a smaller trash bin, too, through Waste Management, right? The one with the green lid?
Oh, I don't know about that.
Yes.
Yeah, the green lid one is that, so there is a 64-gallon trash bin that's out there, too, that's available, that they're using right now.
I'm sorry, do you...
There is, there is a 64-gallon trash bin that's being used right now, too, through Waste Management. It has a green lid, not the yellow lid. Yellow lid is recycling, the green lid is the...
Well, they feature all three sizes for both trash and recycling on their website.
Yeah, and I know we have at least two sizes of each right now, I'm not sure we have the third or not available, but I know we, there are two available right now of each, currently.
And they do feature the 32 also, for both trash and recycling.
Yeah, I can't speak to that, for sure, but I...
She also makes the point that she generates something like two bags or something of garbage a week, and these containers can hold, what did it say? 15. 15 bags.
Okay.
You're talking about the 96, then?
I'm not even sure what two we are available, to be honest with you. I just, the large and the small is what I've always called them, so I'm not sure what the sizes are of each one, but I know there are two available for each.
Can we ask?
They're 96 and 64 gallons.
96 and 64, okay.
That was in 2017, when it came before Council, those are the two sizes that were available.
And the trash has a green lid.
They also have a 32 gallon on their website, wherever there's one.
So, I'm sorry, do you have a question for Sally?
For Ammon, because he helped present this to us, and why...
Okay, well, let's finish the last one, the HOA Silver Lakes, and then, and then we can go there. So, go ahead.
I'm Patricia Draznan, and I live in Silver Lakes, off of B Street. My husband and I have been using Waste Management Services since 2021. We have found them a reliable service, and until now, fairly priced. But today, we share our deep concerns about their proposed contract changes, as we consider their responsibility to a community where they have no competitors. The Fairfield 2020 census counts nearly 9,500 residents, including about 1,200 individuals that are aged 65 or older, and these people live alone, and will have difficulty, or possibly no ability at all, to maneuver an industrial-sized trash container each week, and two such containers on the alternate weeks. And in North Campus Village, as Sally explained, there is nowhere to store these mammoth cans. How will Waste Management serve these customers? In the Silver Lakes neighborhood, most homes are at least a quarter of a mile from the main road, which is a daunting task for dragging one or two giant containers by hand that don't fit in their vehicle. One resident mentioned that she barely fits her 65-gallon can into her car. Even if two containers did fit in your car, lifting these heavy, huge cans of recycling and trash and pushing them inside would be nearly impossible. How will Waste Management serve these people? Personally, switching to a giant trash can would feel like replacing my compact four-door hatchback with a semi. When my husband was out of town, I once tried rolling our 96-gallon recycle can to the road, but the wheels resisted rolling across the gravel, and I gave up. And I wondered, how would I manage this task if I had to live alone? Our trash collectors want to streamline the process for their own convenience and efficiency without recognizing the challenges to the customers. What's missing is the flexibility that keeps their service usable. Here's a random example of a big challenge that was solved by ingenuity in the name of public service. Since its inception, the New York City bus service was available to almost everyone except for those with restricted mobility. Born of the open-mindedness to serving every passenger, a single invention accommodated handicapped passengers in wheelchairs. A mechanical platform lowers to the ground for level access, and then raises the passenger into the bus. Now, New York's modern bus system serves all the people with no added fees. I'm pleased to report that our solution for Fairfield requires no inventions and is already available. The only missing ingredient is the cooperation of the service provider, and encouragement The only missing ingredient is the cooperation of the service provider and encouragement from the council. As Sally mentioned, Waste Management's own webpage displays three, all three of their official container sizes, 96, 65, and 32-gallon containers. Fairfield's 4,300 households should be able to choose from these three sizes with no added fees. Size 32-gallon would offer easiest navigation for all ages of people, and it's a much more practical size for a modern, a modest-sized household. Waste Management can adjust the truck's automated grips to lift each size container. This is their chance to compromise and close the deal. The second point we wanted to raise is about the rates. Waste Management plans to increase their rates every year, a scary and pricey direction. As one family asked, why are they raising our fees while they're cutting their collection staff in half? Dear council, we are asking for a public hearing before any agreement is signed. The public needs to be informed and heard. Since the current contract continues through June, Waste Management will still have time to reorganize. Please could you choose a meeting place, a date, and a time in the very, very near future so that we can spread the word? On behalf of the Fairfield community, we thank you for this opportunity to share our deep concerns and our solutions, which we hope you will take as seriously as we do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, Jason has the sound now for this video. Do you want to hear it? Okay, go ahead.
It is a weekly ritual, taking your trash out so that a waste disposal company can haul it away.
But what if a municipality requires you to use a certain trash can that is just too big? Money Editor John Delano has that story, new at six.
At four foot 11, Donna Riley struggles to use Waste Management's new 95-gallon trash container.
They delivered these huge trash bins last week, and I don't have anywhere to put it, and I physically can't move it around.
The bin nearly comes up to her neck and holds far more trash than one person generates.
These cans hold 15 bags of trash. I have two a week.
She got a notice saying it's part of an automation upgrade in Finley Township, but one size does not fit all residents. And Riley asked the township for a smaller trash can, preferably one that fits under her front porch like the old one did.
I have arthritis in my hands, my hips, my back, and I just can't push and pull that big can around.
She says Finley officials have not been sympathetic, but she did get a call from Waste Management.
Waste Management called me and offered me a smaller can for $65. I don't think I should have to pay $65 when the cans were supposed to be free.
The larger can was for free, and now they want to charge you for a smaller one?
Exactly. I feel it's a punishment because I can't physically use the can they gave me, and so they're going to punish me by charging me for a can.
Now, I'm a whole lot taller than Mrs. Riley, but I still find this trash can to be really awkward. It's kind of bulky, and it's heavy even when empty. I can only imagine what it's like to push when it's full of trash. So why not provide trash cans that fit the needs, size, and medical conditions of residents? No response yet from Waste Management, but Finley officials, who would not appear on camera, tell me they are working out, quote, "kinks" in this program.
I would just like a smaller trash can, that's all.
John Delano, KDKA News.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, so we are going to move on now to resolution action items and ordinances, and obviously down further below in our agenda will be this issue. So the first action item is consideration of award of construction, construction contract and bond for the fire station project. So we awarded the bid last time, so now what we are doing is awarding the contract and the bond. So counsel, you have it in front of you? Melanie, do you want to say anything about this? No? Any questions for Melanie regarding this? If not, is there a motion to move this forward?
Move to approve.
Okay, moved by Gandy.
Second.
Second by Toohill. Any other questions? No, please call the roll. Gandy.
Yes.
Toohill.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
Kennes.
Row.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Okay, that was approved unanimously to award this contract to Chrisner, by the way. And the next action item is consideration of engagement letter with Allerson Cooney PC to amend and restate the Fairfield urban revitalization plan. There have been some updates. Just as a reminder, this is about our tax abatement program. There's a $4,500 flat fee to up this, update this with the state code. So we're taking the previous plan and updating it.
I make the movement to motion to approve the engagement letter with Allerson Cooney.
Okay, moved by Flornoy.
Second.
Second by Gandy. Any question? Seeing none, please call the roll. Flornoy.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Toohill.
Yes.
Row.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
Kennes.
Yes.
Great, thank you, that was approved unanimously. The next action item is consideration of engagement letter with Allerson Cooney PC for residential development agreement and Sunrise Trail urban renewal area. And again, this is with the development agreement with Grow Fairfield.
Make the motion to approve the letter of engagement with Allerson Cooney.
Moved by Flornoy.
Second.
Second by Gandy. Any other questions? Seeing none, please call the roll. Flornoy.
Yes.
Gandy. Yes.
Kennes.
Yes.
Row.
Yes.
Toohill.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, that was approved unanimously. Next action item, consideration of the solid waste services agreement with Waste Management. Attached is a five-year and a seven-year contract. I'd like to mention that if we go more than five years, we have to go out to bid, so you should know that first off. But anyway, you want to come up and?
Sure.
Give us any updates from last time you were here?
Give this awesome group some updates, they're fantastic. Not making my job easy, but making it fun. I go to a lot of city council meetings, and sometimes nobody shows up to talk about this issue, so thank you for being here. Couple of different things, I think the two groups spoke to cart sizes and then the annual rate adjustment. Certainly want to speak to both of those and make sure we're answering any questions for both the council and for the residents. To make sure I understand, are there two HOAs in town that we're talking about? Are you guys all in the same HOA?
Two.
So, two different ones. And what, the size of each?
We have 181 properties in North Campus Village, there's 37 in North Campus Ridge that's being built right now, same age community, and the other Silver Lakes.
And I don't know how many years.
The Silver Lakes is about 30 homes.
Okay, both HOAs?
Yes.
Okay. I know in the conversations with the environmental committee and city leadership, we had talked about there being HOA communities in town, and that there may be a very specific interest there for a smaller-sized cart of 65 gallons.
So, just so you know, we do have, those, those are on the north side of town, and we do have a couple on the south side of town, again, primarily of older folks.
Okay.
So they're not represented here, but I would think that they would have similar comments.
Okay. So, just so everybody is aware...
32-gallon. 32-gallon.
Okay, hang on.
I told you no one was allowed to talk.
Yeah, so, right now, this is not a public hearing, is this for him to address the council? And...
Sorry. So, just want to make sure that, as counsel is aware, I do want the citizenry to know that we did provide two options to the city, one for 96-gallon cart, one for 65-gallon cart. Two separate options. We do want to standardize the cart size at each home because that helps keep the overall cost lower. When homes are allowed to choose the cart size, and Waste Management bears the additional responsibility of swapping cart sizes when somebody moves out of a home, family of six has a big cart, they move out, single person moves in, wants a small cart, we have to go deliver, swap, remove, there's a lot of logistical costs to that, and that gets built into the cost we give the city. So to keep our costs lower to the city, we propose one cart size. But as we discussed with city leadership in preparation for these, these contract proposals, we know there are HOAs. And we did say that for the, I think we were talking about one or two, there's four, that's fine. But for those specific neighborhoods, we're happy to offer a 65-gallon cart, but we can't be swapping back and forth between 65, 96. It needs to be, these neighborhoods are 65, the rest of town is 96. We can't have one home get a 96, and the next year they're 65, and the next year they switch back. It needs to be, what does this HOA want? Okay, we'll give them the size they want. The rest of the town will be 96-gallon.
Will you clarify some? They could also choose, if the, if the council wants a 64 or 65, they could choose that?
For that whole HOA. The whole HOA would be...
No, I mean for the whole town.
For the whole town.
Yeah, there's a proposal we made to the city for the whole town to have 64-gallon, correct?
Yeah, okay, just wanted that clarified. Did you have a question there?
I did. Will you clarify, currently, when you pick up trash, is the only automated size, the 96-gallon, that you can use the machine for?
No, the automated collection can be used for any of those three cart sizes we provide, but it's calibrated for a particular cart size. It can't go and pick up one, different, other, it can, but not with as much accuracy as if it's calibrated for one regular size. So for example, we'd want as much consistency across the cart size within a given neighborhood. Does that make sense?
It does, yeah. I just had people bring up that they have seen the, the trucks pick up multiple cart sizes in their neighborhoods.
Yeah. So the cart tension, the pressure it squeezes, the depth it grabs, the height it grabs at, that can all be calibrated. What you run into is if it's calibrated for a bigger cart, and it comes up on a smaller cart, and that's not calibrated right, on occasion, we see the truck eat the cart, right? So the cart falls in when it's tipped upside down, and then we're out of cart, we have to go buy a new cart, buy that back to the resident without reimbursement, because that's in the contract for us to cover the wear and tear, that's what that would be considered. So, does that help answer that question? Okay. To the pricing, there is an annual adjustment, and that's actually already in the current contract. In fact, that was one of the three concessions that council specifically asked for, that we agreed to maintain a 3.5% instead of a 5% annual rate adjustment. That is one of the concessions that we have made in the new proposed contract to help keep your costs lower over the long term.
Both the five and the seven-year are the same escalation rate?
Great question. No, the seven-year would need to be at the higher 5%. Only the five-year contract has the lower 3.5% annual escalator.
Because you're shifting the risk to us.
The risk of what?
Unknown cost in the future, seven years instead of five.
Correct. The longer term, right, we've seen things over the last, if you go back seven years, hey, whether that's COVID, whether that's China no longer taking recycling, whether that's businesses shutting down and residential volume rates skyrocketing with no adjustment parallel to the charges, there's a lot of risk for the longer term. So, the seven-year would have the 5%, the five-year has the 3.5. The five-year has everything that council asked for. And for those HOAs, we would give them a 65-gallon cart at each of their homes, and for the annual adjustment, it's at the lower rate requested.
I would suggest we table this and hear from the rest of the community, aside from the HOAs, if they want a 96 or 65-gallon bin. We haven't heard from most of the community on that regard. Last time this came up, we heard from a lot of people, and they didn't want any of this, and so we resisted it, and we didn't get the bins. But now I think we need to hear from the community as to whether they would prefer a 96 or 65-gallon bin. We have an aging community, a lot of single people, demographics are changing, I think we need to hear from them. So I would make the motion to table this contract until after a public hearing that we set for the public at large.
Okay, sir, second to Doug's motion to table this.
Second.
Second by Gandy. Any discussion? No, please call the roll. Flornoy.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Row.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
Toohill.
Yes.
Kennes.
Yes.
So...
Thank you.
Thank you. And appreciate, I want to say, I appreciate the concession that you brought back to council. I think this will be a, just an opportunity to confirm that maybe, I mean, it sounds like you make the community, a lot of people might want the smaller one, it might be more conducive. And Doug, are you suggesting that we just add a public hearing at the next, our January meeting?
Sometime in January, maybe the second meeting might be better than the first, but we need to get the word out so people can come in and talk to us.
Okay. So we will add that to our second January meeting.
I mean, we understand that this current contract runs to June, the end of June 2025, but we want to address it sooner rather than later, so yeah.
Yeah, January I think would be.
Okay.
Soon enough, it seems to me.
Yeah.
And I will say, I've had, you know, several people reach out to me on the other end, where they're like, we need recycling picked up every week. And I'm like, well, that's not a thing that I can make happen for you, but you can purchase an additional recycling bin if you want to have more than one picked up each time. And like, I've seen people with three or four of them at their, you know, at one residence. And so, I mean, we're going to hear from all sides, and it's going, you know, it's going to be a divisive topic, so.
They'll purchase them, they're renting them from W...
No, you have to pay for it when you go.
Actually, they'll pay for it, but it's a...
Or they take it from the house they from, and the next person buys it.
Point out, it's a rental agreement, right?
I don't know. They have to pay any kind of money or whatever.
When the bins get damaged, doesn't Waste Management replace them at no charge to the resident?
That's correct. The cost of the bins and the replacement, their wear and tear, that's all covered in the price that we propose to the city. We have proposed two different new contracts, one for 96-gallon cart for everybody, one for 65-gallon cart for everybody. They have two different rates, but minimally different, because the only difference in the two contracts is the long-term cost of that cart.
Right. And actually, from your perspective, if we had the same size of bins as, in the whole community, as, as the HOAs did, that would make it even simpler for you.
It would make it simpler. You would, on the other side, you would have residents that say it's too small, and that would be frustrated paying extra for a second cart. I have a 96-gallon trash cart in my home, I have four children and beautiful bride. We put in, I think, four or five of the 30-gallon bags in a cart, and that fills it up. I know there was a comment about 15 bags, it depends on your bag size, right? But there are a lot of people, in fact, the standard, the industry standard is the 96-gallon cart. And that's not because Fairfield is an experiment for us, it's because we've done that in thousands of communities across America, and that is the size most commonly selected.
But I have seen other-sized bins in other communities.
Absolutely. And where the residents want that, we want to make sure, as we have, we propose an option for the city.
It could be 450 gallons of garbage.
Okay, so, at this point, can we, could we vote? Yeah. Okay. So we are, okay, so we're going to table this, and then we're going to put it on the agenda, I know, but I'm done with the public hearing at this point. So, Patricia, if you want, if you want to stay and catch me afterwards, that's fine, or we can talk later. Okay, so we will put this on the agenda for a public hearing in January. We will move on to a public hearing on the matter of the sale of lots four, five, and six of Block 21 of Radcliffe Edition on South Fifth Street. This is what we call the Logan lots, if you will, more commonly as we know them up here. You'll see the broker price, price opinion attached. And at this time, I will open the public hearing. Is anybody want to speak to this issue? Mr. Malloy?
Good evening, counsel. So we are making an appeal for the, the three lots at Logan. Next year, as we're making progress towards our new subdivision in the Submiles Trail, it's not likely that we'll be doing any new housing development there in, in next year. So it would probably be 2026 before homes are actually being built there. We want to continue with the infill lot program that we started with, the two lots have been purchased thus far, and we'd like to continue that with these three lots, probably targeting duplexes or triplex development for them, but something that we would like to start marketing and, and get some builders and contractors interested for next year.
Great, thank you, Ed. Anyone else? Not opposed to public hearing? And we'll move on to the resolution, consideration of the sale of lots four, five, and six of Block 21 of Radcliffe Edition on Fifth Street. So there is a purchase office there by Grow Fairfield for the amount of $25,000.
Make the motion that we sell, accept the purchase agreement for lots four, five, and six for Block 21 of Radcliffe Edition, right?
Okay, moved by Flornoy?
Second.
And second by Two Hill, to accept this purchase offer by Grove Fairfield for the amount of $25,000 for these lots. Any questions or discussion?
We still are going to have to put this through the newspaper, publish notice and be coming back.
It did.
You did?
Yep.
Oh, okay.
It's published.
All right. We're already there. Good.
Okay. Any other discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Two Hill?
Yes.
Caness?
Yes.
Row?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Okay, that was approved unanimously. Thank you, Ed. Good luck. The next is to open a public hearing on the matter of adoption of the proposed North Campus Ridge Urban Renewal Plan. So I am going to open a public hearing. Does anybody want to speak to this? Have anything to say, Martin?
No. I think we've all, we've been through the development agreement, your attorneys have, and I've, I'm happy with it. And I think at this point, everything's been said, everybody's been informed of what we're going to do there. So, the agreement's there. I think that's all we're doing tonight, is finishing it up so you can sign it.
Yep.
Is that correct? Okay. So I have nothing more to add, there's nothing new or changed.
Great. So I will close the public hearing, and we'll move on to the resolution. Again, the agreements have been signed by the county supervisors and Vedic City, and we have the last sign off on this. So the resolution states consideration determining an area of the city to be an economic development area, and that the rehabilitation, conservation, development, development or combination thereof of such area is necessary in the interest of the public health, safety, or welfare of the residents of the city, designating such areas appropriate for urban renewal projects and adopting the North Campus Ridge Urban Renewal Plan. So it would take a resolution to approve.
So moved?
Okay.
Second.
Moved by Gandy, second by Caness. Any other discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Is it development redundant in there?
A little bit.
Is it supposed to be?
Not sure.
Oh, yeah.
Not sure.
To develop it.
Ms. Tybee?
Okay, okay. Redevelopment?
Gandy?
There you go.
Do you hear that?
Caness?
Yes.
Two Hill?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Row?
Yes.
Your clarification, the second development should be redevelopment, is that what Melanie was saying?
Okay.
Who was saying that? Anybody?
I did. Thanks for that.
It's when you read the attachment, you'll see that it says re- redevelopment.
Okay. Great. Well, it was passed unanimously, so we are moving on. Okay. The next, again, on the matter of the proposal to approve and authorize execution of a development agreement by and between the City of Fairfield and Boss Two Partners LLC. I will open the public hearing. Does anyone want to speak to that? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. We'll move on to the resolution, consideration to approve and authorize execution of the development agreement between the City of Fairfield and Boss Two Partners LLC.
Move to approve, set agreement?
Moved by Gandy, second by Two Hill. Any questions? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Gandy?
Yes.
Two Hill?
Yes.
Row?
Yes.
Caness?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Great, thank you. That was approved unanimously. The last item here is the ordinance, it's a first reading, and basically, what we're doing is creating the fund to put the TIF funds in for this development. So, that reads as consideration to provide that general property taxes levied and collected each year on all property located within the North Campus Ridge Urban Renewal Area in the City of Fairfield, County of Jefferson, State of Iowa, by and for the benefit of the State of Iowa, City of Fairfield, County of Jefferson, Fairfield Community School District, and other taxing districts be paid to a special fund for payment of principal and interest on loans, monies advanced to an indebtedness, including bonds issued or to be issued incurred by the city in connection with the North Campus Ridge Urban Renewal Area, the North Campus Ridge Urban Renewal Plan. So again, this is the first reading of that ordinance.
I move that we adopt this ordinance in the first reading, and move it to the second reading.
Second.
Moved by Flornoy, second by Caness. Are there any questions? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Caness?
Yes.
Two Hill?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Row?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Great, thank you. That was approved unanimously. That will go to the second reading next month.
Do we have an assigned number for the ordinance?
Not yet.
On the second reading.
Okay. Under the mayor's report, I do have two board appointments. We have two people vacating the Board of Adjustment. And so, I would like to appoint Randy Lyons and Tim Keiken. Randy Lyons did fill out a request to serve. Tim Keiken, I think is well-known attorney in town. I did not ask him to fill that out, because I think everybody knows him. So, those would be our new appointments on Board of Adjustment, starting in 2025. So I'd like a motion to approve.
Move to- I move to approve the Board of Adjustment recommendations for membership.
Thank you. Moved by Gandy?
Second.
Second by Two Hill. Any questions? Not, please call the roll.
Gandy?
Yes.
Two Hill?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Row?
Yes.
Caness?
Yes.
Great, thank you. That was approved unanimously. That will go to the second reading next month.
Do we have an assigned number for the ordinance?
Not yet.
On the second reading.
Okay. Under the mayor's report, I do have two board appointments. We have two people vacating the Board of Adjustment. And so, I would like to appoint Randy Lyons and Tim Keiken. Randy Lyons did fill out a request to serve. Tim Keiken, I think is well-known attorney in town. I did not ask him to fill that out, because I think everybody knows him. So, those would be our new appointments on Board of Adjustment, starting in 2025. So I'd like a motion to approve.
Move to- I move to approve the Board of Adjustment recommendations for membership.
Thank you. Moved by Gandy?
Second.
Second by Two Hill. Any questions? Not, please call the roll.
Gandy?
Yes.
Two Hill?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Row?
Yes.
Caness?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Row?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Great, thank you. That was approved unanimously. That will go to the second reading next month.
Do we have an assigned number for the ordinance?
Not yet.
On the second reading.
Okay. Under the mayor's report, I do have two board appointments. We have two people vacating the Board of Adjustment. And so, I would like to appoint Randy Lyons and Tim Keiken. Randy Lyons did fill out a request to serve. Tim Keiken, I think is well-known attorney in town. I did not ask him to fill that out, because I think everybody knows him. So, those would be our new appointments on Board of Adjustment, starting in 2025. So I'd like a motion to approve.
Move to- I move to approve the Board of Adjustment recommendations for membership.
Thank you. Moved by Gandy?
Second.
Second by Two Hill. Any questions?
Yes.
Row?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Great, thank you. That was approved unanimously. That will go to the second reading next month.
Do we have an assigned number for the ordinance?
Not yet.
On the second reading.
Okay. Under the mayor's report, I do have two board appointments. We have two people vacating the Board of Adjustment. And so, I would like to appoint Randy Lyons and Tim Keiken. Randy Lyons did fill out a request to serve. Tim Keiken, I think is well-known attorney in town. I did not ask him to fill that out, because I think everybody knows him. So, those would be our new appointments on Board of Adjustment, starting in 2025. So I'd like a motion to approve.
Move to- I move to approve the Board of Adjustment recommendations for membership.
Thank you. Moved by Gandy?
Second.
Second by Two Hill. Any questions?
Not, please call the roll.
Gandy?
Yes.
Two Hill?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Row?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Great, thank you. That was approved unanimously. The last item here is the ordinance, it's a first reading, and basically, what we're doing is creating the fund to put the TIF funds in for this development. So, that reads as consideration to provide that general property taxes levied and collected each year on all property located within the North Campus Ridge Urban Renewal Area in the City of Fairfield, County of Jefferson, State of Iowa, by and for the benefit of the State of Iowa, City of Fairfield, County of Jefferson, Fairfield Community School District, and other taxing districts be paid to a special fund for payment of principal and interest on loans, monies advanced to an indebtedness, including bonds issued or to be issued incurred by the city in connection with the North Campus Ridge Urban Renewal Area, the North Campus Ridge Urban Renewal Plan. So again, this is the first reading of that ordinance.
I move that we adopt this ordinance in the first reading, and move it to the second reading.
Second.
Moved by Flornoy, second by Caness. Are there any questions? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Caness?
Yes.
Two Hill?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Row?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Great, thank you. That was approved unanimously. That will go to the second reading next month.
Do we have an assigned number for the ordinance?
Not yet.
On the second reading.
Okay. Under the mayor's report, I do have two board appointments. We have two people vacating the Board of Adjustment. And so, I would like to appoint Randy Lyons and Tim Keiken. Randy Lyons did fill out a request to serve. Tim Keiken, I think is well-known attorney in town. I did not ask him to fill that out, because I think everybody knows him. So, those would be our new appointments on Board of Adjustment, starting in 2025. So I'd like a motion to approve.
Move to- I move to approve the Board of Adjustment recommendations for membership.
Thank you. Moved by Gandy?
Second.
Second by Two Hill. Any questions? Not, please call the roll.
Gandy?
Yes.
Two Hill?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Row?
Yes.
Caness?
Yes.
Great, thank you very much. I have a few things, just under other business, just to let you know that the three of us were on a conference call today with the state and in general about her project that's coming to a close here in the next month or two. So we're seeing that move forward, and looking forward to, I'm sure everyone's looking forward to that project getting done and moving forward.
Mayor, when you say coming to a close, do you mean the units are going to be completed?
Yes.
And available for-
Yep.
Ready for occupancy?
Yep.
Awesome.
Yep. The residential ones. Yeah, the residential ones. Commercial space isn't quite done yet, but they're trying to close out the residential, each apartment, and finish those up. I saw posted today that we had a new officer graduated today from the Iowa Law Enforcement Academy, Officer Hirsch, so look forward to him being back in Fairfield and getting busy. Melanie, I'm working on our top 10 for 2025 accomplishments. We got some good ones this year. So, we're looking forward to finishing that up and getting that posted. Heard from the North Pole, the Rotary Santa Parade will go on as normal on Christmas Eve. And wanted to remind council members of the Christmas party at the City Shed on Friday at noon. Hope to see you all there. And have some thank yous. We had some people, obviously, you know, come off of committees that had been long, you know, had served these committees for quite a while, and I really want to extend my appreciation to them. I wish I could give everybody that, you know, gold watch kind of thing, but we can't. So, but I wanted to recognize from the Beautification Commission, Lou Bolster, Mary Williams, and Meredith Seemson for their years on beautification. Board of Adjustment, Scott Willman, and Chris Essel. Planning and zoning, Lyle Modlin, he was on for many years. So again, appreciate his work. And on the NADI Committee, Mark Smith. So again, thank you to all those people who have served very selflessly the City of Fairfield, and I apologize if I missed anyone else on any committees. Lastly, I want to extend my appreciation to this, all these council members up here, and to our staff for their dedication to Fairfield. It's amazing what they all accomplish, and we're looking forward to 2025 and accomplishing some more things. So, we'll see you on Friday. And with that, we'll go to the City Attorney Report. Do you have anything, John?
Very, very briefly, we're trying to get done with the dog case, and I've mentioned that to you a couple times, but we've had a little bit of a setback, partly health-related with the attorney for the animal owners. And the judge is contemplating extending it over into probably late January or February right now. I don't think it's going to make much difference. The main owner of 30 of the animals has been arranging to move out of town to have a place for 30 dogs. And that should sort of be a night and day decision down on East Buchanan. They'll still have the court pursuing a faster action than has been happening as far as the yard. And we have a separate judgment that the court is considering as far as making the yard the subject of a landscape contract that would probably involve a skid loader skimming the surface of that yard and replacing it with something different than what's going on right now. So, that being said, at this point, my impression is that the neighborhood understands that there may be some delays, but it is happening the way it was supposed to coming out of the court proceedings. So, at this point, we've had the cooperation of the neighbors and a great deal of patience. But other than that, there's some things, I think I talked to you a couple sessions ago, about things coming out of the municipal attorney's meeting in November, and I don't think I'll go into those tonight. Probably the next time we have a work session, there'll be a couple things else that I'll say about some of that.
Okay. Great, thank you. Okay, committee and board reports, Board of Adjustment?
The Board of Adjustment met last night, or last night, tonight. There won't be time for you to review the minutes within 30 minutes of the meeting, so we have, and just an update, they had one item that they approved a conditional use for 2169 227th Street, which is the old ambulance garage. They approved a conditional use permit to allow that to be a residential property, as long as the proposed buyers own that property. So when it goes on the market again, the new owners will have to come back to the Board of Adjustment, because it is surrounded by FIDA's industrial work. And so depending on how that develops, then each new owner will know what they're getting into. But they did approve that. So unless you want them to reconsider it-
What's that address?
2169 227th?
Thank you.
So unless you want-
Jean-Claude Plon's own property.
Yeah. So unless you want them to reconsider it, there's no action for the council?
Okay, great, thank you.
Does a note go in that file for that? Because that would be like the same business that's over by the restaurant and the funeral home?
Right.
Where that residence is pushed in between.
It's interesting you say that, because we-
Because I don't want that to get lost, because we might not be around if that gets into somebody else's hands.
Yep. I just started separating old BOA minutes from the BOA packets and putting them into actually property files, because exactly that, you don't necessarily go back and look at the minutes, you want to be able to find it associated with that file, not search through 40 years of BOA records to find that information.
I was just thinking, it would be nice for those in the future.
Yep, that's what we were doing, and then we made a comment about how old BOA records were based off of people's names, not addresses, and so it's been a little interesting.
Okay, great, thank you. Administrator and department reports?
that we have right now is we're paying them, we're asking the citizens to reimburse the city for the material handling of the yard waste. And it's the same thing with the mulch, that they would like to, if we're loading it, charge for that, for that loading until we figure out the logistics of whether we're going to have it managed by someone else. But the conversations that we had was that we could use those same tickets, that they could say, I need a truckload of mulch, and they give us the $24 ticket, and they go get their loader, and they will... We do have people that will come and get trailer loads of mulch, which is fantastic, but we're using our loaders and what have you to get that out the door. So they want to come and do it themselves, great. If they want us to do it, then those fees are being used. That's the conversations that we're having. And then Joe has given me a list that I'm working on of days that you will be able to drop off your brush for free on Friday and Saturday. So we're working with everybody. We're trying to make it better, but we have to maintain control of that site until we decide to do something different. And lastly, that the code enforcement officer real quickly has given me two addresses that we're struggling with. It's 604 North B with Michael Goodman property. It's an abandoned house that the owner lives, I believe, well, the owner lives out of state. It's been empty for a decade, and we would like to have a discussion of what our next steps are. And then secondly, 609 North Fourth. And that property owner is currently, I believe, living in the garage and has no utilities, boat houses, do not have utilities. They're not, they've been red-tagged, and we need to move forward with it. But the property owner for 609 doesn't have a telephone. We actually have to notify him in person. We have to go and find him. So we will need a week's notice, but we'd like to have those two properties sent to the Property Committee and have a discussion. But we can have the 604 North B property owner via phone, but 609 North Fourth, we have to notify him so that he can come and have a conversation with us, but they have to know when that is so they can be available.
If you referred it to property and then we didn't have a meeting until January after the holidays, that would work?
That would be perfectly fine.
Make that motion.
Okay, there's a...
To property.
Okay, there's a motion to refer these two properties to the Property Committee after the first of the year. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Second by Gandy. Any questions on that? All those in, oh, yes?
A comment on that and a couple other things that Weston's got that are like it. One of the problems we're going to run into on a few of these homes where somebody's actually legally titled in the property, they're living there, but they're like, they're choosing to live in their garage because they don't have utilities. There is a question, and I'm thinking of two other properties that also have that same scenario where they don't have utilities, but they're legally titled in the property. I've had some preliminary discussions with the county attorney's office, and some of these folks, there is a need probably to have them mentally evaluated before you have a judge do something with them. And the judge will either tell us they're doubting it and questioning it, and what do we know about it? Or have we talked with the county attorney's office, who has the state code responsibility of looking at situations like this where you've got somebody mental that probably needs the public looking after them in some extent? There is something called an emergency public guardianship that the county attorney has the jurisdiction to do. And I'm sure they're not looking forward to us bringing them a pot full of this stuff. But there are several of these situations where people are living on their own property like they're a squatter, and really, they're opting for, I think, a double sleeping bag in this kind of winter without any other alternatives, and they don't want to be helped by going over to one of the available resources for a night or two, Last Resort Fund or the handicap places that the multipleplex apartment buildings have. So we're going to have a bigger issue to deal with eventually as far as some of these. Weston and I know it's an issue. We don't have a good solution for it, and the county attorney is going to probably say back that, well, if you want to have the court refer it over to the Department of Human Services and have them take a look at it under that emergency statute, that might be okay. But we're probably going to be back talking to you about situations that we don't have a good fix on, even though we clearly have a nuisance, and we clearly have a situation that probably, not just the red tag, but probably demolition on a couple of these places is what's going to come. But taking the property if the people aren't coherent or aren't found to be sound, it's something we're going to be stalled on.
So, John, I have a question. Are you saying that the county attorney can force DHS to do an evaluation? Because I know at least one of these properties, we tried to get DHS involved and do an evaluation, and they wouldn't do it.
Yeah, and I've been there before. When I was county attorney, I had to kind of raise hell, basically, to get somebody down at Libertyville that was living in squalor, and eventually their building was torn down. But it's that situation, partly DHS doesn't like the idea of us wielding our quote "heavy hand," because it's not heavy at that point. Somebody else is going to have to step in probably that's a relative or a friend and eventually become a voluntary court-appointed guardian. But right now, for an emergency purpose, I guess, I don't know any other place to go but that statute, and DHS is the one that should be doing the evaluation, and the county attorney should be asking for it.
Okay.
So, but if you approach them with it two or three times, they're going to say, are you just dumping on us? And we're not. There are enough people in that scenario in this community right now that it's a bigger problem than we've got a solution for.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, so we do have a motion and a second to move these properties to the Property Committee as of the first of the year. So any other questions on that? Go ahead and call the roll. Flornoy?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Caness?
Yes.
Rowe?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. Anything else, Ed? I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
By Toohill. Second by Caness. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, save, sign. Great, thank you, everyone. Meeting adjourned.